Cheers. One, two. Check. One, two.
Huh?
Uh.
I mean, whenever you, whenever it's your time, I'm guessing. I don't, they didn't give me any cue or anything. If you want the mic, it's already hot.
Fellow here.
Good evening. Good evening and welcome to this special session recognizing the twenty twenty-two Nobel laureates in physics. The Nobel Prize, first awarded in nineteen oh one, is regarded by many as the highest honor in science, economics, and literature. Laureates are widely recognized as giants in our field. This past year, in December, the twenty twenty-two Nobel Prize in Physics was awarded to Alan Aspey, John Clauser, and Anton Zeilinger for experiments with entangled photons, establishing the violation of Bell's inequalities and pioneering quantum information science. These and other experiments paved the way for quantum computers, quantum networks, and quantum encrypted communication. I cannot think of a more appropriate topic for a gathering such as this. So I'd like to introduce the twenty twenty-three APS president, Bob Rosner, who will tell you a bit more about the very special guests we have with us tonight. Bob?
Thank you, John. We are really thrilled to have two of the twenty twenty-two Nobel laureates with us tonight, John Clauser and Anton Zeilinger. During this session is David Haviland, a member of the Nobel Committee for Physics. And we are so pleased that he was able to join us from Stockholm for this unique event. Thank you. Uh, David will give a brief history of Alfred Nobel, the inception of the Nobel Prizes, and how they are decided and awarded. David will then introduce the twenty twenty-two Nobel laureates in physics. David, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Let's see here. So.
That's gonna be fun.
The talk will appear, I hope. Do I need to put it in presentation mode? Can you see it? I'm not seeing it on the screen down here. I don't know if you can see it up there.
About this screen.
Is the talk, is the talk being projected okay? Okay. Well, I can just start while they're trying to fix the, uh, problem here, but, uh, thank you to the APS for organizing this event and, uh, sponsoring this, uh, and also thank you to the Swedish Royal Academy of Sciences, uh, through the Nobel Institute for Physics, who are sponsoring my participation in the event. And I wanted to just start out, uh, and give a little bit of a history of, uh, with some interesting facts about the Nobel Prize and how it came to be. Uh, and I'll just start the talk and hopefully the slides will appear. Uh, so, uh, Alfred Nobel was born in Stockholm in, in eighteen eighty-three and, um, he, uh, he, uh, his, uh, father, uh, Andrew, Emmanuel Andrea de Nobel, uh, uh, lived there and he, uh, he had, uh, four brothers, Robert Ludwig and Emil. And when, uh, Alfred was quite young, his father's business, his father was an engineer and builder. And if you're ever built in Stockholm, you understand there's lots of rock and you have to blast rock to get to start construction projects. So those explosives were, were in this family from the very beginning. Uh, but Emmanuel, uh, Nobel has, uh, he had a, a business with, um, a, a construction company that went bankrupt. And right before he was being thrown in debtor's prison, he escapes the country, leaving, uh, Alfred and, and his mother and his brothers behind. He goes to Saint Petersburg and starts over. And he, uh, makes, uh, mines for the, the, the harbor in Saint Petersburg, which helped the Russians defend, uh, the harbor in the Crimean War. And in this way, he gets in with the royal family in Russia and starts to build up the, his, uh, business again. And after the war, the, the business sort of floundered and they were, uh, they, he moved the whole family over to Saint Petersburg. So Alfred grows up in Saint Petersburg and the, and they were searching for new path for the business. And his brother, Robert Ludwig, started in the oil industry in Baku. And they actually are credited with founding the Russian oil industry as his, uh, son, his brother Ludwig and his son Emmanuel also really, uh, built up the Russian oil industry. And, and Alfred goes then off to Paris and he studies chemistry with Professor Palouse. And there he meets Asanio Sobrero, who invented nitroglycerin. And really Alfred's life is based, uh, his, his inventions are all around, uh, how to safely transport and, uh, a nitroglycerin and ignite it so it can be used as a, an explosive in, in both actually, uh, commercial applications and also in military applications. So, um, he goes back to Stockholm and the, the family returns to Stockholm and they start manufacturing nitroglycerin. And in a horrible accident, his younger brother Emil is actually killed. Uh, and they had to move the whole factory then outside of the city. It was a, a, a massive explosion that killed several people. It was written up in gory detail in the Stockholm newspapers. And it was a very difficult thing for the family to get through. But Alfred keeps working and he, uh, eventually builds an empire. He has over three hundred and fifty patents. He's, um, uh, traveling all over the world. He speaks five languages. He's building, licensing his patents, building up companies in all these different countries. And he builds a, a, a massive empire around nitroglycerin explosives and how to safely ignite nitroglycerin. Um, as his, his brother Rob, 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 Robert and Ludwig start this oil business. And, um, at many critical times in that business, Alfred is there to inject capital and help build up the, uh, save them from bankruptcy. So he, he acquires quite a bit of stock in this brand Nobel, which at one time, uh, became, they actually had fifty percent of the world market in kerosene. At the met, at that time, uh, lighting was the main application for oil. Uh, so the Nobels were, uh, prominent, uh, competing with the Rothschilds and the Rockefellers for the world market in oil. And Robert, and Alfred has a big piece of that. So he, he, uh, he eventually moves to Paris. He has a wonderful villa there. He's involved in all the cultural life. He's a very well-educated man and speak, as I say, speaking five languages, traveling around all the time. But he never has any time for a family. He's working all the time. And, and, um, he, uh, then builds up this massive empire and they build a, finally build a Nobel trust in eighteen eighty-eight, uh, where, um, he tries to build a, a, it's one of these first international trusts where they try to, uh, keep, uh, comp, uh, comp, control competition between all the various companies in different countries, which are patenting his, his, uh, his, uh, inventions. But he's quite fed up with business and I found this quote, uh, he, he moves back to Sweden and buys a mansion, Bjorkborg Manor in Carlsgård, Sweden. It's actually a museum. You can go there today and visit it. Uh, and he, uh, is kind of fed up with business and I found this quote, uh, which kind of explains his state of mind late in life. "I care not a straw for whether a trust company is formed or not, but I care a great deal about my technical labor. And I find it high time to disengage myself from the slavery which for years I have submitted against my will and for no good, either to myself or others. There is not the slightest reason why I, who have not been trained to commerce and cordially hate it, should be plagued with all these commercial matters about which I know little more than the man on the moon." So that's Alfred Nobel's state of mind when he, uh, passes away in, uh, nineteen, or eighteen ninety-six, uh, at his villa in San Remo, Italy. And his last will was from, uh, eighteen ninety-five. It was signed in, into, uh, it was signed and witnessed in the Swedish Norwegian Club in Paris in eighteen ninety-five. And, uh, he, the will starts out, this is the, uh, copy of the handwritten will. It starts out, "Oh, I'll, I'll give a little money to my nephews and my nieces and some other people." Uh, and then the final paragraph of the will, uh, it states that, uh, is really the foundational paragraph of the whole Nobel Prize. And I'll read the beginning of it here. "The whole of my remaining realizable estate shall be dealt with in the following way. The capital invested in safe securities by my executors shall constitute a fund, the interest on which shall be annually distributed in the form of prizes to those who during the preceding year shall have conferred the greatest benefit to mankind. The said interest shall be divided into five equal parts, which shall be pointed as follows. One part to the person who shall have made the most important discovery or invention in the field of physics. And then one part for a chemical and a discovery improvement, and then medicine. And then, uh, and then in the field of literature, the most outstanding work in an ideal direction. And one part to the person who will have done the most for the best work for fraternity, promoting fraternity among nations, the abolition of reduction of standing armies and holding the, and promotion of peace congresses." So, um, those are the different prizes. Then he specifies who should be awarding, deciding who's awarding the prize. And he ends with, "It is my express wish that awarding the prizes, in awarding the prizes, no consideration be given to the nationality of the candidates, be they, but that the most worthy shall receive the prize, whether he be Scandinavian or not." So, uh, interestingly, when, the first thing that people tend to ask when they got the Nobel Prize is what country did the person come from? So, uh, one thing you might have noticed, there's no such thing as the Nobel Prize in Economics. The Economics Prize is not part of Alfred Nobel's will. Uh, the money for that prize does not come from the foundation, uh, which was, uh, formed for, for the Nobel Prize. It was actually the first Economics Prize awarded in nineteen sixty-eight on the three-hundredth anniversary of the Swedish Riksbank and the Federal Reserve. And the official name of that prize is the Swedish Federal Reserve Prize in Economic Sciences in memory of Alfred Nobel. So they say, they share the same prize ceremony and dinner in the Economics Prize. Okay, so the, the will is immediately contested by the family. They didn't want to, they wanted the money and they didn't want this crazy prize idea to go through. Uh, but it probably, it probably never would have happened if it wasn't for these two young gentlemen, Ragnar Solholm and Rudolf Liliaquist, his assistants, personal assistants and engineers that worked with Alfred Nobel. And they went around to all the banks in Paris and took his, uh, Vardapaper, his, his, the, the papers that, uh, for, for, about all his assets, packed them into crates, sent them, sent them back to Sweden. And in, in Sweden, they got the help of Karl Lindhauge, a stock, prominent Stockholm lawyer and politician. Uh, and they start liquidating all Nobel's assets abroad, uh, uh, outside of Sweden and bringing the money home to Sweden. And the money's piling up in the banks, but it, the, it can't be, uh, invested until this will, the contesting of the will is settled in court. So with the help of Ludwig's son Emmanuel, they get the family on board and they settle the dispute. And the Nobel Foundation is formed and signed into law. And the first prize is then awarded in nineteen oh one, five years after Albert's death. And, uh, the Physics and Chemistry Prize and also the Economics, the Riksbanks Prize is awarded by the Swedish Royal Academy of Sciences, where you can see our building there in Stockholm. We have ten different classes. And the Physics class is really responsible for the Physics Prize. And, um, a little bit about the procedure we use to, uh, uh, fi- find the Nobel laureates. So the, uh, we have nominations and evaluations and, and we send out invitations to nominate. And there's various lists that we have for this purpose. And so several of these are standing lists, so academy members, Nordic professors of physics, former laureates and so forth. But two very important lists where we actually get most response for, uh, invitations to nominate is what we call List Five. This is academy, the, people in the academy can just suggest that a person should be able to nominate. And, and then this, all the, this list is approved by the, the Physics class. And then we have another List Six, which rotates on a three-year basis to many major universities in many countries. And through those List Five and Six, we get most of the nominations by far. And the nominations are then received by January thirty-first every year. Uh, the letters inviting to nominate go out in the, in the early, in the early fall, right after the summer. And the nominations have to be received by January thirty-one to be valid. And then the committee starts to sift through the nominations and group them, and we suggest evaluators. And the, we have a discussion with the Physics class and then people are, are asked to evaluate a prize. And this is really a val- very valuable, uh, resource for the Nobel Committee. Many people, uh, maybe sitting out in the audience have been asked to evaluate. And people do a really fantastic job. So we thank you very much for your efforts in writing these evaluations. Um, and, uh, the, 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 the evaluators are asked to write reports. Sometimes these can be very broad reports about a field, or they can be very specific to certain nominations, or they can be even very specific about, uh, uh, one or two people and what their role was and so forth. And we ask that people try to keep their identity secret and not put this on the CV. And then all this material, the evaluations, and then the committees every year writing a, a report about their thinking. This is all put in an archive and the archive is kept secret for fifty years or until all people who are involved in this decision have died. And then you can actually get access to the archive if you apply to the historian of the academy and, and he'll, and he will grant access, uh, for serious historical research. So the process of decision is really a three-stage rocket. Um, the Nobel Committee for Physics is charged with making a recommendation to the academy, the plenary session, the entire academy. And the committee's is, consists of five members, one standing secretary, and then we can have several adjunct members who don't actually have to be members of the academy. And, uh, the, the nom, the committee is nominated by the Physics class and then approved by vote of the academy. And the committee's job is to deliver a suggestion for the Nobel Prize to the academy. And then, uh, the Physics class, we also deliver the suggestion to the Physics class in other series of meetings. We get feedback and, um, uh, they, they also give a separate recommendation to the academy, whether they think the committee's prize was good or not. So it's sort of a check and balance on the committee. And then finally, the, uh, decision for the prize is made in a plenary session of the academy, uh, in October, right before the pri- prize is announced, there's a vote taken and, uh, um, the, the prize is then decided. So the, uh, the, right after we make the decision, we go out and announce it to the press. And there is a picture of the plenary hall of the academy you can see there, uh, with all the cameras lined up. And, uh, and the, you can see on the, my colleague, Professor Hans Hansen, with, this year explaining entanglement to the international press. Many of you might know Hans and, uh, uh, a, a challenging job. So, uh, then, then, then it's, we can, uh, we on the committee can relax a little bit because we just have to wait for the party and the Nobel Foundation takes care of that. We don't have to do anything to organize the party. But, uh, uh, there's a week in Stockholm around December tenth. The prize is always awarded on December tenth, the day that Alfred Nobel died. And, um, it's a big, big event where in the, in the concert hall, you have the king of Sweden get hands over the prize to the laureates. And they're all sitting on stage there in those red chairs. And, um, it's all on TV and you see the king and the queen. And there's lots of discussion about the dresses the ladies are wearing and so forth. And then after the ba- banquet, we all bus over to the, after the prize ceremony in the concert hall, we all bus over to the city hall and have a big banquet. And there's entertainment during the banquet. It's a very big festival. And this is probably the biggest social event of the year in Sweden. And I tell people, I feel fortunate to live in a country where the main social event of the year, where everyone who's anybody wants to be seen, you know, is, uh, actually a celebration, uh, of science and culture. And in fact, celebrating physics even. So, uh, uh, with that, I would like to, uh, welcome to the, our twenty twenty-two Nobel laureates. Uh, Alan Aspey unfortunately couldn't be with us for the, uh, to give a lecture, but John Clauser and Anton Zeilinger are here. And they received the prize in twenty twenty-two for experiments with entangled photons, establishing the violation of Bell inequalities and pioneering quantum information science. So John Clauser will give the first talk. He received his BS in Physics, uh, from California Institute of Technology in nineteen sixty-four. And his MS, uh, from Columbia University in nineteen sixty-six. His PhD was also from Columbia in nineteen sixty-nine under the direction of Patrick Tadeos. Between sixty-nine and seventy-five, he worked as a postdoctorate researcher at UC Berkeley and Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory. Uh, and in nineteen seventy-two, together with Stuart Friedman, who died in two thousand and twelve, uh, they, they together carried out the first experimental verification of, of the violation of the Clauser-Horn-Schimoni-Holt inequality. This C-H-S-H inequality is a Bell-type inequality or an experimental test of entanglement that was first proposed by John Stuart Bell. And Bell died in nineteen ninety, but his work is very important and foundational for this year's prize. Uh, and his name is mentioned in the citation also. So with that, it's my pleasure to welcome, uh, John Clauser, uh, to the stage to give his, uh, Nobel lecture entitled, "Proof That Non-Local Quantum Entanglement Is Real." John?
You had a mouse? Mouse. Earlier you had a mouse. Yeah, there it is. Oh, you, you just use the touchpad. Okay. All right. Thank you. This is, it was supposed to be, uh, awarded for work done in the past year. Well, okay, the first, uh, two, uh, components, uh, the first two-thirds of the talk will be work that was done actually fifty years ago. Uh, the last third, uh, after fifty years, I think I finally understand what it is I didn't understand and why I don't understa- still don't understand it. So I will share that with you. So that was, that has been done quite recently. How do you switch slides? Just push. Okay. First question. What is quantum entanglement? Basically, you, I'll read in your, uh, physics textbook. Uh, there, the Schrodinger produced not one, but two Schrodinger's equations. The first one was for hydrogen, for single, uh, electron systems. That's usually the first ten chapters or so. And the second one was a very different equation, which was for helium, which just, uh, with two electrons. The second equation introduced a new phenomenon, which is called quantum entanglement. Schrodinger actually invented the term quantum entanglement. Okay, for the, for, if we have, have two electrons, if they are totally independent, then their wave function of the pair is just the simple product of their two individual wave functions. However, more generally, the combined wave function is a sum of products. And that sum of products introduces a totally new behavior, which is called entanglement. And with entanglement, the two particles exhibit, uh, intimate correlations. Uh, many people think that they need to, the two particles need to be identical. Uh, they don't. What is non-local entanglement? Well, with a helium atom, the two electrons are intimately in contact with each other. So it's, and continuously interacting with each other. So it's hardly surprising that their behaviors are correlated. However, both Einstein and Schrodinger observed a very peculiar feature. Two or more particles can remain entangled intimately correlated, no matter how far apart they are separated. Both Einstein and Schrodinger were very disturbed by this, uh, phenomenon. In nineteen thirty-five, Einstein, Podolsky, and Rosen proposed the addition of hidden variables to quantum mechanics to try to explain this non-local entanglement. Niels Bohr argued that that was not necessary. Why was it needed? Well, uh, prior to our work in nineteen sixty-nine, uh, the observed spectrum of helium and/or other molecules, atoms and molecules, was considered normally, uh, totally sufficient, overwhelmingly sufficient for people, uh, to believe that local entanglement is required. Prior to our work, nobody seemed to suggest, uh, that one should actually doing, uh, uh, an actual experiment to test the case, uh, the situation for highly separated particles. In fact, my personal proposals and those of my associates were highly ridiculed. We were told, uh, "Go do some real physics instead." I kid you not. Uh, the only exception was in fifty-seven. The only exception was in '57, Bohm and Herrenoff showed that the Wu-Shachnoff experiment, which was done earlier in 1950, refuted a hypothesis by Schrodinger and Fury that suggested that maybe quantum entanglement disappeared as the particles separated. Next question. What is a Bell inequality? Well, there are really three Bell inequalities. Mike Horn and I named them all Bell inequalities in honor of the inspiration. The first one was in 1964 by John Bell. I will discuss them in turn as I go. Unfortunately, it did not offer any experimental prediction, nor was any experiment actually suggested. And my letters to John Bell, he admitted he had no idea what the experimental status was. So following that, I got together with Mike Horn, Adnan Shimonie, and Richard Holt, and in 1969, we produced the CHSH inequality. This is a very specific experimental prediction. We proposed a very specific experiment, told all the details. We also noted that the ideal experiment was impossible for us with the existing technology, but we figured out sort of what was commonly called a workaround, or a loophole, to provide a very reasonable alternative. And then finally, in '74, Mike Horn and I produced the CH inequality, and that is the first loophole-free experimental prediction that was made. And we provided a much simpler experimental arrangement for doing that. Okay, let's go back to the first one. Okay, everyone, Bohr, Einstein, Schrodinger, everybody assumed quantum mechanics always made the correct predictions for correlations, for the measurements performed on entangled particles. In 1964, there was great irony. John Bell looked at Einstein, Podolsky, Rosen argument, and he came up with the exact opposite conclusion that he came up with. He showed that their discussion of entanglement implied that there was an incompatibility between hidden variables in quantum mechanics and the predictions of quantum mechanics. And the intimately correlated behaviors of the entangled particles cannot be explained by the addition of hidden variables. Unfortunately, the inequality that he came up with required a perfectly ideal apparatus, which doesn't exist in nature, and without that, there was no way to test it. So with that specifically in mind, we got together and we proposed a test. And we designed a specific experiment. It was an extension of an earlier experiment that had been done by Kocher and Cummins at Berkeley, but significant modifications were necessary to do that experiment. We formulated what's now called the CHSH inequality. That is a very specific experimental prediction. And it doesn't require ideal apparatus. So we have two different predictions, one from quantum mechanics, one from the CHSH inequality. How about doing an experiment to find out what does nature choose? So I went on to do that. Okay, there was a minor little problem. We couldn't do the ideal experiment, because perfect detectors didn't exist. But we found a workaround for that. Okay, the third inequality is the Clauser-Horn inequality in 1974. So Mike Horn and I were trying to figure out, what did we really just prove with the, doing all of these experiments? And we invented what's now called local realism. Local realism is basically the minimal platform for any of Einstein's work. I will go on to it in a minute. It's a very significant generalization of local hidden variable theories. And for these, for local theories under local realism, we formulated the CH inequality. That's also a very specific experimental prediction for a very simple experimental arrangement. It allows for totally loophole-free experiments to be done. So, and we have some very simple assumptions that will allow you, the CH inequality to reduce to the CHSH inequality, so that the earlier experiments, the ones I did with Stu Friedman and myself, would also be tests. More recently, in 2013 and 2015, the CH inequality has been tested directly. Okay, so I did three, actually four, experiments back in the early '70s. First one was with Stuart Friedman, where we first demonstrated a violation of a Bell Okay, there was a second experiment being done by Dick Holt and Frank Pipkin at Harvard. They got the opposite result. So I decided, well, maybe I better repeat their experiment also. So I did that in '76, and got the same results that I got the first time. And there's a third experiment, which I did, which really wasn't part of all of this, but it was sort of motivated for, and it's one of my favorite experiments, so I'm going to throw it in anyway. Okay, this is the experiment, first experiment. This is a picture of it. Here we have, this is in the sub-basement of Burj Hall at Cal Berkeley. On the far right-hand side is a very young Stu Friedman. This became his PhD thesis at Cal. So for this, we use a three-level cascade in calcium. This is a singlet S0 to singlet P1, a singlet S0, J equals 0 to 1 to 0. So that gave the required polarization correlation that we needed. Okay, in the middle of the, okay, here, there's an atomic beam apparatus with a calcium atomic beam. Unfortunately, lasers, suitable lasers, hadn't been invented yet. So it was a real pain in the neck, exciting the darned stuff, and we couldn't even try making a flow lamp to excite it. That didn't work. So we just had to have filtered from a very weak continuum from a deuterium lamp. So it took, was very low count rate. Good news of the low count rate was we didn't have to subtract off any accidental background. So we got better than six sigma on that result. And we used this protocol that the CHSH had developed. Okay, as I mentioned, Holt and Pipkin got the opposite result using a mercury source. So Stu got his degree and went off to Princeton. And so I rebuilt the whole thing, put in a, used a mercury source. And this time, the, rather didn't need an atomic beam, it was just all a sealed-off bulb, it was a three-level cascade, and had just a simple electron gun that came out of a cathode ray tube to excite the mercury. So I got better than four sigma on that result. And again, used the same protocols that CHSH developed. And while I was at it, tried putting in quarter-wave plates on each of the arms, and measured the circular polarization. Did I skip one? Ah, yes. Okay, this is one of my favorite experiments that I also did in between those two. This was, one of the assumptions that we were thinking about was, well, it was believed that photons behaved like particles. Had that ever been experimentally demonstrated? The answer is no, it had not. Well, okay, why should we think that? Well, Einstein, 1917, very famous paper, one of his best papers, actually, in my opinion, showed that photons must behave like what are called directional energy bundles. And this was required for thermal equilibrium to obtain, between a gas, molecules, and blank radiation, for them to come to the same temperature, you had to have these directional energy bundles. Schrodinger looked at this further, and he wondered, well, okay, is this still a wave or is this still a particle? If it's a wave, well, it could just be a very sharp pulse propagating out, and he proposed, we have needle radiation, so it could be highly directed. So what he noticed was, if you have, say you have a, let's see, this is, here we go. Say you have a source here, and you send light out to a beam splitter, and you put two photo tubes on either sides of the beam splitter. If it's a short pulse of radiation, it will be a classical radiation, some of it will be reflected and some of it will be transmitted. So the two photo detectors will sometimes see coincidences. One doesn't know that the other one detected it. Whereas if it's a point-like particle, then one and only one will register. And so there will be no coincidences. So he proposed that, and a group in Budapest actually tried it. Unfortunately, they didn't have a single photon source available to them. That was Adam, Janosy, and Varga in Budapest. So I looked at that and realized that this was only a null experiment. And so, but I realized that if you did this twice, so if you could make a single photon source by using these cascades that we were doing with the Bell-Sherem experiments, and so you have a source emitting pairs of photons. And so this then became the first truly conclusive. Well, why was it conclusive? What I found was that if you use Glaubers formalism for fluctuating classical electromagnetic fields, that you can set up and apply the Kosch-Schwarz inequality, then you could get a very interesting inequality, that this anomalous rate between these two detectors, if it's, say, waves, and these two detectors will show coincidences, the product of those must be bigger than the coincidence rate between this one and that one times this one, which is a very real cascade rate. And it turns out, the data just overwhelmingly violate the Kosch-Schwarz inequality. Okay, let me move on to local realism. As I mentioned, Mike Horn and I developed this when we were trying to understand what it is we actually had shown by doing these experiments. Later on, John Bell and Adnan Shimonie added components to this, and we renamed it, what Mike Horn and I originally called it Objective Local Theories, Shimonie and I renamed it Local Realism. Local realism is a very, very general theory. It's a significant generalization of local hidden variables, and it is actually the minimal basis for doing physics in spacetime, i.e. what Einstein was trying to do all along. So in that, we first formulated what's now called the CH inequality, and it's a new experimental prediction, and allows loophole-free tests. We don't need determinism or causality. The photons, or whatever it is there, can propagate totally stochastically. And you don't need particles. Okay, unfortunately, it was dead on arrival. The experiment, the theory had been refuted before it was even fully formulated. As in the earlier Friedman-Clauser experiments and the '76 Clauser experiment proved that it was wrong. Even though it was dead on arrival, eventually, this was found that since it was provided loophole-free tests, and it was tested something very important, that later on, a lot of work, effort was done to actually go to test it. So let me go on to some of one of the details of local realism. What is it that these experiments disproved? Well, Anton Zeilinger, and he can correct me here, once noted that if Bell-Sherem and local realism had been invented prior to quantum mechanics, they were so reasonable that they would have been adopted as a law of nature, and quantum mechanics would have been a great surprise, rather than the other way around. Basically, what does local realism assume? It assumes that nature is made out of stuff, and that stuff is distributed throughout Einstein, Podolsky, Rosen called it the stuff, elements of reality. Mike Horn and I called it objects. John Bell suggested a name, beables. Cosmologists simply call it matter. Nature, presumably, it's reasonable to believe that nature consists of matter. It is, all it assumes is that matter, stuff, everyday object, exists whether or not we observe them. You don't need, the assumption is, you don't need an observer, the universe has been around for a long time before observers showed up. We don't require that it evolve deterministically. It could be totally a stochastic evolution. You need to be able to take some of this stuff and put it in a box. I'll get into a box in a minute. You assume that the results themselves are definite. That is, using Schrodinger's cat analogy, you assume the cat is either dead or alive, even though you don't know which. Okay, and we assume that stuff has intrinsic properties. When you make a measurement, do an experiment inside the box, then the probability, not the actual result, but the probability of the result, we assume that it depends upon the properties of the stuff. And it may depend upon apparatus parameters. If you change the apparatus parameters, presumably you would get a different result. Okay, let's go on to what's a box. Well, a box, you're probably familiar with, what's called a Gaussian surface. Gauss somehow proved, and I don't know how he did it, that there exists closed surfaces that divide all of space into two parts, an inside and an outside. So suppose, here's a box. We have here, we're doing an experiment, we have a parameter being chosen, something is being measured, we don't really know what it is, we're just doing an experiment, and we get a binary result. we get a binary result. Here's another box, okay, with somebody else doing a similar experiment. We make these boxes spacelike separated, to make them four-dimensional boxes, they're shrinking at the speed of light. Okay, so this is X-Y diagram, here's X-T diagram, they're shrinking very rapidly. So if there is a correlation between results in box A or box B, presumably it has to do with stuff back here in the overlap region. So, we have these two widely separated boxes, each has stuff or matter in it. We assume that the experimental choice made in one box doesn't affect the experimental outcome in the other box. Local realism is the statement effectively that Einstein's spooky action at a distance isn't occurring. So it's enforcing Einstein causality and prohibits any such non-local causative effect. The great surprise is these very simple assumptions are sufficient on their own to produce the CH inequality. Okay, it has been tested and convincingly refuted with newer technology. Two groups in particular, one Anton's group in Austria, and Paul Quiat's group in Champaign-Urbana, Illinois, first did it with no separate, non-local separation, and then redid it again in 2015, and got a perfect, found a direct violation of the CH inequality. Okay, so the stuff I've done recently. Recall that Schrodinger had two equations. His second one for helium had entanglement. Nobody has noticed, at least until now, is where I can tell, that these two equations operate in very, very different spaces. I will call this an elephant in a room, if you'll pardon the metaphor. And the spaces are improperly linked by what I will call Born's inequality, Born's ambiguity, I'm sorry. There, I would argue that the EPR-Bor debate was never settled, and in fact, I will demonstrate that by showing that there were two whole, completely different sets of quantum mechanics textbooks that were, arose from this. And what, once you understand what local realism is saying, you realize that the two are totally incompatible. Okay, so first, what I call School Number One is actually a form of local realism itself, that is for single particle systems, like hydrogen. Okay, this is all published in a recent book. Okay, what are the books on School Number One? Well, the earliest I could find was a textbook by Born, 1933. First two versions were in German, the third one finally in English. Dickey and Witke was a very famous one, that I used at Caltech. Eisley-Eisberg, Feynman's review article for spacetime description of quantum mechanics, Feynman and Hibbs textbook, French Modern Physics, and French and Taylor's very popular quantum mechanics textbook used at MIT. Merzbacher, very famous textbook, and one of the earliest and most important was by Schiff. Okay, what does School Number One say? In School Number One, for single particle systems like hydrogen, quantum mechanics is formulated in laboratory space. What's laboratory space? It's the three dimensions we live in. We assume that space in this room has only three and only three dimensions. The space itself is independent of whatever the structure, the system it is that we're looking at. Space exists on its own. And exist particles that may or may not even exist in this space. In this formulation, Schrodinger's wave function is a function of position in space. So our lab is a position in the laboratory, okay, and the probability density, psi star psi, depends upon position in the laboratory, and for any point in space, it tells you what the value of psi and psi star psi should be. It's governed by Schrodinger's equation propagating, and you've frequently heard quantum mechanics described as waves of probability propagating in space. That's where this comes from. There's also a conserved probability current that Born derived originally to show, give you flux conservation in Rutherford scattering. Unfortunately, this interpretation only works for single particle systems. What's the second one? Second one is formed in configuration space. These authors all admit upfront that they're in configuration space. Probably the most, one of the more important ones, Bethe and Salpeter, Quantum Mechanics of One and Two Electron Atoms, Bjork and Adrel, Relativistic Quantum Mechanics and Quantum Fields, Condon and Shortley's book, Atomic Spectro, Dirac's book, Landau and Lipschitz's book, Messiah's very important textbook. Unfortunately, Messiah is a little bit wishy-washy and flip-flops back and forth in some of his descriptions. Pauling and Wilson, used by all chemists, and the granddaddy by von Neumann's book. Okay, what's in configuration space? It's very much different. It's formulated in configuration space. It's very different from lab space. It depends intimately on the system that is being studied. The number of degrees of freedom of that system depends upon the system itself. So wave function in configuration space is formulated in a fictitious k-dimensional vector space, which, where the arguments of the wave function are the degrees of freedom. Now, this actually goes clear back to classical mechanics, the degrees of freedom, which depend upon the system. Okay, so the wave function, this, okay, this, here we go, okay, is the psi in configuration space, this is straight out of von Neumann's book. So if you have, say, two particles, two mobile particles, one of them has position XYZ and a spin, the other one has another XYZ and a spin, and the wave function can be a function of two sets of XYZs. What happened to our three and only three dimensions in the laboratory? Very different. Okay, moreover, it is not a function of the position in the lab. That means its value is exactly the same everywhere in the lab. Okay, so the evolution is not in lab space. There are no waves of probability. It is just simply flowing in this fictitious abstract mathematical space. There are no conserved currents. So it's a totally artificial space. There's no prohibition for superluminal propagation of signals. There's no reason one cannot have instantaneous collapses of wave function. Okay, where did Born fit in here? In his textbook, he claims the two are the same. He says that's true because they both yield the same probability. As I have pointed out and stressed, they are not the same. Bohr and Einstein were arguing past each other. Bohr was arguing for a wave function in configuration space. Einstein was arguing for a wave function in lab space. So there are no probability waves in configuration space for N greater than one systems. So, we have two different, which, how do we, how can we be consistent? Okay, so for consistency, the, you need to use the same equation for the special case N equals one from an N greater than equal one position. The only way to do that is to do everything in configuration space, much as I dislike it. So you need to always use configuration space. So why do we have to get rid of lab space? Because it's a form of, quantum mechanics therein is a form of local realism. Unfortunately, that's dead. So there are no probability waves. Unfortunately, I have, I personally haven't the faintest idea, how does one visualize waves propagating in this abstract mathematical space? Maybe so you can help me, but I sure don't. If you read Dickey and Witke and Merzbacher, they also expressed same kind of alarm. Okay, for my, I've run out of time here, but I will offer a final quadri. Where does the classical quantum boundary rear its head most severely? I believe that that is where one tries to merge quantum mechanics and general relativity. Okay, so general relativity is clearly a form of local realism. And black holes are a distortion of lab space caused by heavy gravity. But quantum mechanics needs to be formulated in configuration space. So how can one build a quantum mechanical general relativity? I don't know, but I offer that as a challenge. Can you make a pair of black holes? And if you did a Bell-Sherem experiment on them, would they violate a Bell inequality? I don't know the answer. I'll leave that to my general relativist friends if I have any. Thank you.
Sorry, I'll tell you later. No, this again, my microphone on, it should not be on.
Okay. All right, so thank you, John, and the next speaker will be Anton Zeilinger. He studied physics at the University of Vienna, receiving his PhD in 1971 with a thesis on neutron depolarization measurements under the supervision of Helmut Rauch. He did most, he did postdoctoral work at the University of Vienna, at the Vienna Atom Institute and at MIT, completing his habilitation at the University of Vienna in 1979. Then he worked in various positions at MIT, University of Vienna, Vienna University of Technology, Technical University of Munich, University of Innsbruck, and the University of Vienna, where in between 2004 and 2013, he was scientific director of the Institute for Quantum Optics and Quantum Information, and where he is currently an emeritus professor. Professor Zeilinger is mostly widely known for his first realization of quantum teleportation and entanglement swapping. He also contributed to the field of multi-partite entanglement, where in 1990, together with Greenberger and Horn, they conceived the GHZ state. It's my pleasure to welcome Professor Zeilinger to give his Nobel lecture entitled "A Voyage Through Quantum Wonderland."
Thank you very much for your kind introduction. It's nice to see you again after we have met in Stockholm just a short while ago. Now, I like my Nobel speech, I dedicate this talk to the memory of Helmut Rauch and Michael Horn. Helmut Rauch was my supervisor in Vienna at the PhD thesis and as a postdoc, and he had created a little environment in Vienna, which was completely open to fundamental questions. No interest or no necessity to look at application whatsoever. And I only realized later that this was very, very special and extremely important for my, for my further career. And secondly, to Mike Horn, he had already been mentioned by John in his talk a couple of times. I met John in the 1970s, and we worked together at MIT and continue to work together. He also had an extremely open mind about the fundamental, foundational questions, and I would like to suggest, here at this meeting, we see all the applications. If you go over there, the exhibit hall, you see all the possible applications and so on. What is, in my eyes, what needs to be supported more in this country and everywhere in the world is work on foundations. Because the foundations, the foundations number one might satisfy our curiosity, and secondly, all this quantum information stuff is based on work like John and I, and I got the price, but other fundamental work very, very. So, my entry, I call the talk "A Voyage Through Quantum Wonderland," because for me, it's a wonderland, and it's my personal voyage. It started in 70, early 70s, as neutron interferometry. I don't know, is there a pointer here? Yeah, there's a pointer, very good. So this shows here neutron interferometry developed by Rauch, 300, 74. It's about eight centimeters large, and it divides incoming neutron wave into two waves and superposistive again. Now, this was a big thing at the time, and what we used is for was to demonstrate, when you apply magnetic field to one of the two beams, that you have to turn a neutron around twice to have the same quantum state, because it's a fermion and not just once. Now, this was my entry also in the foundations, because in 1976, there was a conference in Erichsen, Sicily, called Thinkshops in Physics, Experimental Quantum Mechanics. One of the organizers was John Bell, and there I met, for example, John Claussen for the first time. I met Mike Horn, I met Shimonie, who was, who was mentioned, et cetera, et cetera. This was a meeting about entanglement, and I tell you, I didn't have the slightest idea what was going on. I did not even understand your arguments. I had to learn this much, much, much later. Now, it was already mentioned, this debate between Einstein and Bohr, and I think it can be summarized in a very brief, very briefly, that Einstein demanded physics to describe reality, which exists independent of our observation. Now, this is trivial, this is now done in many labs at that time. It was not so, it was not so trivial. Actually, on the, on the role of the observer, in these experiments, we started the experiment and then we went skiing for a week. This was done in Grenoble in France, and when we came back, the experiment was finished. I don't know what the, what, what the observer has to do here. Now, one of the question, which is really fascinating is, are there any limits for this kind of phenomena? How large can you get? Just to tell you what my belief is, there is no limit. There is no limit whatsoever implied in any way. It's just a question of ingenuity, of money, and so on, and so on, and of effort, development of science. Here is an experiment, which we did years ago with Fullerins, which at that time were far the largest thing to, to observe, but there is no reason why we shouldn't be able to observe quantum interference someday with living objects. Now, here is the famous paper, mentioned already by, by, by John, Einstein-Brodowski-Rosen paper of nineteen thirty-five. Uh, it's, uh, the, the essence is summarized in the letter in nineteen seventy-four, which Einstein wrote to Max, nineteen forty-seven, sorry, Einstein wrote to Max Bohr and he said, "The reason I cannot really seriously believe in the theory, in the quantum theory, is that the theories cannot be unified, which the fundamental principle that physics has to describe reality in space and time without spooked action at a distance." I share, I share John's analysis, you know, that we should not confuse, that the big question is, is configuration space versus, versus real space. Now, here is an interesting, the first reference to that paper was in New York Times, just a few days later. It say Einstein attacks quantum theory, and then I liked the next line, it was Einstein-Brodowski-Rosen three physicists, scientist and two colleagues, find it is not complete. So if you publish with Einstein, you're not a scientist, right? Anyway, whatever this means. Here are the quotations of the Einstein-Brodowski-Rosen paper, which are quite interesting. Paper was published in thirty-five, there were only four, five citations in the beginning, and then the whole discussion died out because it was considered to be just philosophically not really interesting. And then it picks up again, nineteen, we learned nineteen sixty-four was Bell's paper, and then there was the first experiment, the first experiment by John, there were more experiments later and later, and in nineteen hundred, nineteen ninety-two thousand, it explodes. And this is when it started, the entanglement became interested in quantum information science technology and so on. Today, as you can see, the paper is quoted about twice a day, which doesn't, actually doesn't mean that it is read more often than in the old days. And people should read it, and it's not easy to read. You have to read it three, four, five times because you have to shed your quantum instincts to understand what, what Einstein was saying. Okay? Now, here is Schrödinger in nineteen thirty-five. Here he realized that entanglement is really special. He called it "verschränkung" in German, which is a much better name. Verschränkung is something like that, the well-defined connection, while entanglement is spaghetti, you know, just undefined. Entanglement is not just like spaghetti, so very well-defined correlation between different systems. And here is a sentence by Schrödinger, which I really like about the situation. He wrote, "I would not call that namely entanglement one, but rather the characteristic trait of quantum mechanics, the one that enforces its entire departure from classical lines of thought." I think this sentence is still correct, but we have not found what the new line of thought is. I really claim that there is a very interesting open question. Albert Einstein actually is well-known for, for having, having uh, expressed his dislike about randomness in, in uh, quantum mechanics. And he said he is not, he is convinced that God has not played dice with the universe, but he did not realize that, you know, entanglement, here symbolized the two random events separated by, by large distance. That the randomness of the individual events prohibits entanglements to violate Einstein's faster speed of light limit. And that is actually interesting, the two things which Einstein didn't work randomness and entanglement, they work together in a very interesting case. Okay, now, here is Bell's theorem, we heard much more, this small slide can tell you, the typical experiment switch video is a source, which permits entangled photons in the state, for example, horizontal, horizontal plus vertical, vertical, so either positive or negative, the point is that this states rotational invariant. So this entangled in any, in any basis, which means that you cannot assign values to the polarization before you do the measurement. This is completely random. And Einstein expressed actually his, about the nineteen thirty-five paper, he wrote in a letter to Schrödinger, that the, that the main point was hidden behind too much erosion. Okay? Because the main point, he said, and he wrote this in, in, later on, he said to him, the main point is that when you do a measurement here, it defines in which basis the other, the other system is defined. And he said, that therefore the psi function cannot describe the real factual situation because what he calls the real factual situation must be independent of what they do on the other side. Now, there have been many experiments, we heard about the Claussen-Friedman experiment, experiments by, by ALASB and many others later on. My personal entry was in, in nineteen eighty-five into the field, despite the fact that I had collaborated with Mike Horen, we never talked about entanglement. And in nineteen eighty-five, I came into the lab at MIT, I was on a summer residence, and Mike Horen says, "Do you want to go to Finland?" And I said, "Sure, why not?" Well, there is a conference in Juensu in Finland, about fifty years of Einstein-Brodowski-Rosen. We were working on interferometry at that time, and he said, "Okay, we have to invent the connection between interferometry and Einstein-Brodowski-Rosen." And we did that, we invented the connection, namely entanglement in momentum. And here is Mike Horen smiling about, about this kind of achievement, we invented that and that actually created a lot of activity. In, in the eighties, we also found, we took that, with Kenny Greenberger, we found that correlations between three particles or more can be even stranger than, than with two. The point is that if you have entanglement between two particles, you can perfectly well explain the perfect correlations in a local model, perfect correlations. But if you have different measurement directions, then you have statistical results, and these statistical results cannot explain by a local realistic model. So this was kind of comfortable, you know, quantum mechanics is a new statistical theory, okay, maybe deviates from the classical lines of thought. We found, we found, with Greenberger and Horen, that if you have three entangled particles, then you can predict with certainty, and then two measurements, what the polarization of the third one should be, in the local realist, in the quantum mechanics, predict exactly the opposite, the opposite result. So the conflict is between classical physics and quantum physics, not only the statistical conflicts, it's much deeper. Now, here is Greenberger and Horen, with me, actually with Greenberger, we proposed many years ago at EPS to create a topic group on quantum information and foundation, something like that, which later became this division of quantum information. In my personal regret a little bit, the word, word foundation was dropped. I think that it is important for me, what you, one should do something about, about foundations, anyway. But the whole thing, the whole thing exploded, now is absolutely, absolutely unbelievable. Here is the standard source which we are using, a big progress compared to, to, to John's and also a space experiment, was the development of down-conversion sources, non-linearity, where, where, which you pump, with non-linear crystal, which you pump with a new UV beam, and you get out entangled photons, I don't want to go into the details, which are very high, very high entanglement, you know, well above ninety-nine percent, as good as you want, doesn't matter, and well-directed. So this is really ideal for the experiments. Here is the GHZ experiment, this story is simple, I don't want to go into detail, the story is simple, is that you create two pairs, you look at in cases where you have two pairs, that means you have four detectors and everyone of the detectors has to, has to click, you know, simultaneously, and one of the, one of the photons, sorry, one of the photons is a trigger, just serves as a trigger, and then if that trigger clicks and you have photons here, then these three are entangled in the GHZ state. Lo and behold, we get, we get the predicted correlations, and now, as you know, the GHZ states are higher, entanglement states are very important in many quantum information tasks. Here are my friends on the, on the GHZ experiments, Harald Weinfurter, Chien Wai Pan, who is now a big leader in, in China, Dick Baumeister, and Matthew Daniel, besides the people who you know already. The connection to quantum information was made in nineteen seventy, the connection of quantum to information, was made in nineteen seventy by Stephen Wiesner, who invented uncorrespondable quantum money. So he said, if you print on a, on a banknote, the number, not, not as a classical number, but as a superposition states, today we would say qubits, then this is, this would be, it is absolutely safe because other quantum states cannot be cloned, so implicitly here already had the famous no-cloning theory. And the name qubit was later on invented by Ben Schumacher, the general superposition between zero and one. Here is our experiment in nineteen ninety-six, to the best of my knowledge, is the first application of entanglement in an information task. The point is that, as proposed by Bennett and Wiesner, the point is that if you have an entangled pair here, by manipulation of only one of the two photons, you can manipulate, you can jump around in the, in the Hilbert space of the two particles, which is four-dimensional, that in any way you want. So that means that you can, you can instead of just zero and one, you can encode four different informations, just manipulate them one, and one particle, this is called dance coding now. The big thing was, in terms of public, was quantum teleportation proposed by these friends here, Charlie Bennett, Basakrebo, Joseph Perez, and Wuthers in nineteen ninety-three. When that proposal came out, my reaction was, excuse me, I said that, that's a typical theory's idea, completely impossible. And not, not knowing that we were already developing the tools for that experiment because we wanted to do the GHZ experiment. And we realized, we realized that over the course of time, and then we sort of did the experiment as you, as you, as you know. The basic idea is that you have a quantum state which you want to teleport, and you use an additional entangled pair, you project the one you want to teleport and the end one of the entangled pair onto an Bell state, onto an entangled state, and that way, that way, this one is projected into a state which, besides a unitary operation independent of a state, corresponds to the original. So that is the experiment which we, which we did, we created two pairs, one pair going this way, one pair going this way. Here is the, uh, this is the photon to be teleported. Here is the miracle happening that you entangle the two. The basic simple idea is, you send two photons onto a beam splitter, and if they come out separately, then they don't know where they came from. They don't know, am I this photon or am I this photon? And that way they are projected onto an entangled state. That's the, that's the simple physics behind it. Here are our friends on the entanglement experiment in, in, again, in Innsbruck at that time. Now, I come to entanglement swapping, which to me is one of the most interesting concepts of all of them. It was, it was, it was already proposed in the original teleportation experiment, as I mentioned, and, and we here coined the notion and, and analyzed a little bit in detail what it means. You have two entangled sources. Two entangled sources, now these photons, and these photons are completely independent. But by projecting the two of them, two and three onto an entangled state, you can make the other two entangled, which have never met each other, which don't know anything about each other. So entanglement not only can be about different particles, as John mentioned, but they also can be about systems which have never met, which are completely separated, you know? And that is actually one of the basic concepts for, for quantum, for quantum repeaters. And there is a variant invented by Asha Perez, one of the leading Israeli physicists, leaders in quantum mechanics, who said, "Follow me." Suppose I do this entanglement swapping. Okay, I have two pairs, two pair sources, and I register one photon, one and one photon for immediately, after they have been created. And later, at a later time, I decide whether I project these two onto an entangled state, by which the two already registered become entangled, or I project them onto separate state, by which the other two are not entangled. And this is just the way this, that is just the way this, the same data which you registered in one and for, tell you two mutually exclusive sets of informations, depending on what you did, where is the, where is the, where is the, where is the two in the center. So this to me is, is a, that is one of the experiments we did, a while ago, Shaoxong Ma, who is now in, in China, what we did simply, we delayed the decision to project the two, to really do some later time, and had quantum random number generators to make the decision and so on and so on. This to me is a support of Niels Bohr's famous saying, "No phenomenon is a phenomenon unless it is an observed phenomenon." Without the observation, forget it. It may be not true for, for classic physics, but that's a different story. Now, I just to tell you that we have not, not only done these fundamental things, that's a list of, of, of realizations of quantum computation, which we did in my, my group until two thousand ten, at some point I had to stop this. Now, I come back to, to, to Bell's inequality. There is, there are these loopholes, one of the loophole is, is the idea, it is crazy, but, but it's beyond classical physics. If you have you entangled pair here, that the two measurement stations know from each other, and therefore, therefore, the correlations are somehow pre-established. The way to, to avoid that is by switching very fast the polarizations here. This experiment by ALASB was, was Without observation, forget it. It may be true for classical physics, but that's a different story. I just to tell you that we have not only done this fundamental things. That's a list of realizations of quantum computation, which we did in my group until two thousand ten. At some point I had to stop this. Now I come back to Bell's inequality. There is, there are these loopholes. One of the loophole is the idea, it is crazy, but it's beyond classical physics. If you have you entangled pair here, that the two measurement stations know from each other. And therefore, therefore, the correlations are somehow pre-established. The way to avoid that is by switching very fast the polarizations here. This experiment by S B, which was the first experiment here, used periodic switching. But he supported, I actually, therefore, says, "Thank you, Alain, I can teach my students." To do experiment, what's to do is with random switches over large distances in that case about three hundred meters. Well, there is still this question open. We admit it's not very far separated, maybe there is a common cause. In the common past light cone, I come back to that in a second. One of the applications is entanglement based quantum cryptography. Where you use the two random number generated on each side. Here, generate random numbers. If you measure the same polarization, then you get perfect correlation, so you get on each side a series of series. Series and ones, this is all stuff. And what we did is we encoded a picture of the famous Venus of Willendorf. This figure, but this large, was discovered near Vienna. It's about twenty-five thousand years old. In order to reason why we choose this figure, I told my students, "We have to choose something which is definitely not a military symbol." This is probably not a military symbol. Okay. So anyway. Just about closing loopholes. As already mentioned by John, there were, this is a nice history of closing more and more loopholes. The loopholes which was open for photons for a long time. It had been closed by the Weinland Group for atoms. Is that you have to detect is efficient the large fraction, as already mentioned, of the photons to make sure that what you see is not just a biased sample which prefers quantum mechanics. And there were a number of experiments at that time, in nineteen two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. That's a cover of Fisher's letters, actually. And that picture is a composite, composite of photos of all authors of these papers and of the famous authors' authors' history. So John Claussen, that you also, that on that front cover. We should look for it. Anyway. So the next step in our work was to go to larger distances. Part of the reason was to have measurements which are more widely separated than just a few hundred meters of you meet in a laboratory. The second point is, we really had the plan to go into space sometime. Here is a picture with the number of experiments between the two islands of La Palma and Tenerife. In the Canary Islands, the reason is that on both islands, you have clusters of telescopes. So you have infrastructure. And if you ever come to the Canary Islands, visit those telescopes, it's absolutely fantastic. It's really unique. Okay. Now, final application was the quantum cryptography with the Chinese satellite meteors. I was not successful, because it is probably my fault to convince European authorities to start a satellite, so the Chinese did. And here is an experiment, but that experiment is not about entanglement, but classical quantum cryptography between Beijing and Vienna, using stations in Europe and stations in China. In that experiment, we sent our Chinese friends, decrypted a picture of Erwin Schrödinger. And they sent us a picture of Metius, a Chinese philosopher, who was born in the same year as Aristotle. And he actually was the first one to prove that straight light propagates along straight lines. That's interesting. One usually doesn't know that in the West. Now, coming to the last few experiments, I told you, you know, we had this experiment where the two random numbers were chosen by random number generators separately, separated by three hundred meters and so fast that no signal could propagate in time from A to B to tell the other side what will be measured. Now the question is, if you want, maybe there is still loophole. Maybe there is still an unknown cause somewhere hidden in so. So you want to use random number generators, which are even further separated and further out and further out and further. So we did an experiment with, where we used the fluctuations of light from two stars in our galaxy. Which is something which puts you back in time at some time before Gutenberg invented the press. Also, this is significant. But then, there was this great idea by Galizia, Friedmann, and Kaiser to use fluctuations of light from redshift from quasars. Because they are bright and they can be very, very far. So we did this experiment on the Canary Islands, which was from the whole handling. It was one of the most beautiful experiments I ever did in my life. So there was a source of, and the can, on La Palma, there is a source producing entangled photon pairs. One goes here, one goes here. And there are two telescopes, rather big telescopes. They happen to be separated by the right distance for us, namely one kilometer, which is a convenient distance. So you can do all the electronics on each side independent, without communication. And what we did is, the vermieter telescopes. This is the William Herschel telescope, which was built by colleagues of the United Kingdom. And this is the Telescopio Nationale Galileo. Built by our Italian friends, who my time is up, so I should finish. Okay. So and the point is, each of them looked at two different quasars separated on the order of eight to twelve billion light-years out. And look, small fluctuations in the color of the quasars to trigger which polarization is measured. The next question is, how can you go further back? Well, one limit is the, you can go and look at the sweet Kelvin background radiation. You know, two hundred seventy thousand years after the Big Bang and so on and so on. This is fine, this could probably be done, we just have to convince some people who operate these telescopes to, to this microwave antennas to allow us to do it and adapt them accordingly. But then the question, can you even go further? And the answer is yes. The answer is very crazy. Maybe we can use some day primordial neutrinos, neutrinos which come from the Big Bang or even primordial gravitational waves. I know that this is extremely crazy. And other future possibilities, how can we go further? A big open field is multi-particle entanglement beyond G H Z. I'm convinced, you know, for two particles, we had Bell's inequality, Claussen, Horne, and so on. For three particles, we're G H Z, I'm convinced that the truck doesn't stop here. There is something very interesting physics hidden in higher dimensions. We should just do it, we should work on it. In multi-particles and in higher dimensions. Both of them, there were various reasons actually for interesting things going on in higher dimension. I want to finish with an entertaining, entertaining experiment. You see, big number of people here, experiment which we did in big international collaboration, where we challenge local realism with human choices. The basic assumption is that the decision of a human has to be somewhere free. Whereas otherwise, if our decisions were predetermined with way to experiments. It's not a reason to do an experiment, it must be free in some sense. And there was this expert, this thing organized by Carlos Abellán, Portugal, and by Morgan Mitchell in Barcelona. Where you had, where you had twelve, it would human participants who could download some little software on their smartphone, they could type in random numbers. Okay. Hundred thousand humans participants creating random numbers. They generated about hundred billion binary choices. This were uploaded into cloud infrastructure. And then downloaded to twelve different laboratories on five continents. Okay. And actually, the interesting point about this random number is that it was very good, except for one feature. Humans tend to switch between zero and one more often than a random number generator. Okay. So anyway, so this also violates the whole, also here is a repeating. I want to come to some provocative statements at the end. Or there is a famous statement by Bohr, which some people say, maybe he did not really say it, or whatever, but he should have said it. He probably said it. There is no quantum world, and I should say that I actually share this viewpoint. There is no quantum world, there is only an abstract quantum physical description. It is wrong to think that the task of physics is to find out how nature is. Physics concerns what we can say about nature. Physics concerns what we can say about nature. It means that information is a fundamental constituent. Information is extreme, it's not just a derivative, but it's a fundamental constituent. And I just want to provoke some of you in my eyes and I understand that this was also in big way position, for example, of Heisenberg. The quantum state itself is just a representation of our knowledge. It lives, it doesn't live in real states. And this information about classical results, about measurement results, about possible detector results, about your arrangement and so on. And using it, you can calculate new classical result, namely new measurement results. And in my opinion, there is no measurement problem at all. Because the measurement problem, so-called collapse of the wave function is this is because you have to change the quantum state. But what would be more natural than to change the representation of knowledge if you did an experiment and get a result? Heisenberg said it very nicely in nineteen sixty. Record of recording is not a physical, but rather so to say a mathematical process. With a sudden change of our knowledge, also the mathematical representation of our knowledge undergoes of course a sudden change. So from that viewpoint, there is no quantum state, state collection, there is also no spooky action at the distance. Because the quantum state doesn't leave out there. I want to quote two famous people in the end. One is, one is Rabi, you know, the father of nuclear magnetic resonance and so on. In a conference in eighty-five, he said, "I think we are missing a very basic point." The next generation, when they founded, will knock on their heads and say, "How could they have missed it?" And here a quote of my favorite philosopher, Albert Einstein. "I want to know how God created this world. I'm not interested in this or that phenomenon. I want to know his thoughts, the rest are details." Thank you very much.
So with that, I would like to close the session. Thank you all for attending and please thank, give us a round of applause for the twenty-two Nobel laureates, Anton Zeilinger and John Kozlowski.